Thank you, everyone, for coming. Candy, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir, we have President Mayor Moss, Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Runnigbaum, Mayor Pro Tem Young, Councilmember Krummel, and Councilmember Van Sant is absent.
Thank you. At this time, will you all please stand? Jimbo Cash, Minister of Assimilation and Education at Willow Park Baptist Church, will give the invocation and the pledge.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Father, we come to you at a time like this in our nation, God, where we lean on sovereignty and we're asking that you would be in control or comforted by the fact that, God, we know you know all things. And so, we ask that you would be with the council tonight as they go through the planning for our city. God, that you would give wisdom, that you would guide, and you would give counsel to all things. We thank you for your love through Christ and his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jimbo.
We've got a proclamation tonight for the Center of Hope. And we have Stacy Mark, CEO. Stacy, you want to come up? We have Paula Robinson, the board chair, Lynn Beard, vice chair, Rosie Messino, Joe Wilkinson, and Doug Jefferson. Will you all join me up here, please? Stand in and stand closely to the likey likey. Rosie, you'll get us a picture of them.
Yes, sir.
Whereas the Parker County Center of Hope equips and empowers citizens of Parker County to live successful joint bill lives by creating and implementing long-term, sustainable solutions to address poverty in our community. And whereas the Center of Hope provides basic assistance education and career development and family empowerment to the homeless, hungry, uneducated, unemployed, underemployed, single mothers, disabled, elderly, people in crisis, and disadvantaged children and youth. And whereas the Parker County Center of Hope has built a network of more than 60 churches, 50 businesses, and numerous community organizations that share a desire to create a community of caring that produces solutions to struggling individuals. Now therefore, I do, Mayor Moss, Mayor of Willow Park, by virtue of the authority invested in me, to hereby applaud the commitment Center of Hope has made to support and build a strong community. And I encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating their contributions to Parker County. Thank you.
Okay, we have public comments. We have an email from Gina and Matthew Dillon that will go into the minutes. We also have Russ Othier, who would like to address the city council. Sheriff, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Moss, to address the city council.
You said, right over there, Mike.
Okay. I probably don't need the microphone. I've never been accused of being soft spoken. Can everybody hear me? Well. Again, I am the sheriff, Russ Othier. I've only been sheriff about a little over five months right now. So, I'm very, very new to this position, even though this month marks my 43rd year in law enforcement. City policeman, state trooper, Texas Ranger, county district attorney's office investigator, and then Larry Fowler, the former sheriff's chief deputy for 11 years until earlier this year. So, I just wanted to come here, introduce myself. A lot of you I know, some of you I don't know. Just want to express our commitment to the city of Willow Park. Nothing's going to change. I know we dispatch for the city of Willow Park. Our deputies help your officers on the street, and I know your officers help our deputies as well. We love our partnership. Anything that we can do to help you, we're definitely going to call on you. You know, if we need the help, and we would certainly like you all to do that as well. We just, we love Parker County. Our deputies love Parker County, and we're here to serve. My family lives in Parker County, so I take their protection very, very near and dear to me. It's my job to protect them. And that's just, that's just a dad's father's responsibility to their family. It's just that my family grew by 150,000 people about five months ago. And I'm still going to take that commitment just as seriously. So, we're here for you. I don't want to take up your time. I know you all are a very, very busy group. And I know it's not a question and answer thing, but if you ever need anything, give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks for coming. First item on the agenda is to approve the city council minutes of August 10, 2021. Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the council minutes of the August 10 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number one, the city council may conduct a public hearing on the city of Willow Park fiscal year 2021-2022 proposed budget. We'll open the public hearing 7:07 PM. Are there any comments?
I'd like to point out that this is still the same budget that we have been looking at for the last couple of months. This budget does include three additional firemen at Chief Lenore's request. It does include an October 1 start date for those firemen. This does include an increased pay for police officers in addition to the pay raises that were given in July of this year. And that roughly 93% of the general fund is going to the police and fire departments. So, this is clearly what we said from the beginning, a back-to-blue, back-to-public safety budget. And I appreciate Chief Lenore working with us. I appreciate Chief West working with us. Michelle was also very instrumental in some of the city services. There were some cuts made to make this budget possible within some of those departments. And I appreciate them working with us. The water fund, which is not really, we haven't discussed that a whole lot, water and wastewater. Those two funds are still sound. And this is the first time, I believe, at Mayor Pro Tem Young's request a number of years ago, where we do not have a transfer from the enterprise fund into the general fund. As Jake had mentioned previously, our general fund's starting to stand up on its own. And so, we're starting to see some of the benefits of some of the investments we've made through developments, personnel, and other issues over the last three to four years. This council should be commended for that. And any other questions you all have on the budget, I'm ready to answer them.
Public hearing is closed at 7:08 PM. Item number two, the city council may conduct a public hearing on the city of Willow Park fiscal year 2021-2022 proposed tax rate. We'll open the public hearing at 7:09 PM. Are there any comments?
I would just say we received the one via email that all council members have.
Correct.
Yes. For the record, this is the same tax rate that we voted on at the last meeting, the proposed rate. The M&amp;O rate is .30162. The interest and sinking rate is .26503, otherwise known as the debt rate. And your total tax rate is .56665. And this is, again, nothing has changed from the last meeting that we voted on.
Any other questions or comments?
As a reminder, can you give us what last year's tax rate was?
Last year's tax rate was, give me two seconds, .5365. And I had a slew of information up here. It's .5365. It has been that way since, I want to say, 2016. It has not changed since 2016.
Public hearing is closed at 7:10 PM. Item number three, to consider and act on adopting ordinance 836.21, an ordinance providing for the adoption of the city of Willow Park municipal budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. In your package is ordinance number 836-21, an ordinance of the city of Willow Park approving and adopting a budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 836-21 approving and adopting a budget for the city of Willow Park for fiscal year 2021-2022?
What part do we have to read here?
Just make a motion.
Just, yes.
Oh, just make a motion to approve the budget as read.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have to, there must be a record vote. And I'll go around the room. I'll start with Eric. Eric, do you vote for or against the budget?
Aye.
You need to say, "I vote for the budget."
Oh, I vote for the budget, sorry.
Yes.
Councilman Runnigbaum.
I vote for the budget.
Councilman Young.
I vote for the budget ordinance.
Council Krummel.
I vote for the budget ordinance.
Thank you. Okay. That's all we need, right?
Yeah, now we have to take a separate ratification vote.
Since this budget will raise more total property tax revenue than the budget for the previous fiscal year, the council must take a separate ratification vote on the budget ordinance. The ratification vote must be a record vote also. So, again, I'll go around the room and ask, Councilman Contreras, do you vote for or against ordinance 836.21?
Do we need, do we need a motion?
No, you, please.
I'm sorry, we need a motion. I'm sorry.
I move that we approve the ratification of this budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, I'll ask Councilman Contreras, do you vote for or against ordinance 836.21?
I ratify my vote for ordinance number 836-21.
Thank you. Council Runnigbaum.
I vote for the ordinance 836-21.
Councilman Young.
I ratify my vote for ordinance number 836-21.
Councilman Krummel.
I ratify my vote for ordinance number 836-21.
Thank you. Item number four, to consider and act on adopting ordinance 837-21, an ordinance adopting an ad valorem tax rate and levy on assessed property not to exceed .56665 per $100 valuation for tax year 2021 for the city of Willow Park, Texas, including a levy of debt obligations, .26503, and levy of maintenance and operations, .30162, consistent with the fiscal year 2021-2022 municipal budget. In your packet is ordinance 837-21, an ordinance of the city of Willow Park approving and adopting the city's tax rate for tax year 2021. Since the ordinance will adopt a tax rate that will exceed the no-new-revenue tax rate, the motion to approve the ordinance should state precisely the wording is required by law to be specific. And we need someone to make a motion. And you have the wording there.
I'm going to start right here. Okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate, .56665, with a effect, yeah, which is effectively an 8.2% increase in the tax rate as set forth in ordinance number 837-21.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion?
I would like to have some presentation here on. We did discuss this budget. One of the things that we had said early on in our discussion of tax rate and budget was the potential of having our firefighters not start until April 1st, potentially. So, one of the things that was requested in the last few weeks was that we adopt something that allowed our firefighters to start October 1st, which I believe is reflective of why the increase in the tax rate. I also challenged our city manager to come up with a budget way of doing this that did not increase our total tax rate. That involves both looking at M&amp;O and INS. And the only other option that we looked at was lowering our INS or our debt below what is suggested at this point, which would essentially leave us no room to do any projects over the next year. So, after, I will say, a lot of discussions and typing in spreadsheets, I do think that the best thing at this point is to have our firefighters start on October 1st and to adopt INS tax rate that allows us to have some flexibility to do something for the citizens, like a road project or something in the next year. So, I very much appreciate Brian Grimes for working and doing everything we could to look at it and figure out ways that we could potentially not have to raise the rate. But in the end, I do support this rate. And so, I obviously haven't discussed that. But I would question whether anybody else on the council feels that we need to look at a lower rate. I would say at this point, I support it, a higher rate.
We have a motion. Is it, would you be making a second?
No, that's a second by Eric. That's a discussion.
Discussion. So, now you hold the vote.
Okay.
There's no other discussion.
Any other discussion? Okay, this must be a record vote. So, I will ask again, starting with Councilman Contreras, do you vote for or against the tax rate 837-21 ordinance?
I vote for the tax rate as set forth in ordinance number 837-21.
Thank you. Councilman Runnigbaum.
I vote for the tax rate as set forth in ordinance 837-21.
Councilman Young.
I vote for the tax rate as set forth in ordinance number 837-21.
Councilman Krummel.
I vote for the tax rate as set forth in ordinance number 837-21.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item number five, the city council may conduct a public hearing on proposed stormwater impact fee to pay for stormwater drainage infrastructure. We will open the public hearing at 7:17 PM. Are there any comments?
Just real quickly, Mayor. You guys recall the stormwater impact fee study that was performed? The rate that was recommended in that report was provided P&amp;Z, or, excuse me, to the Capital Improvement Committee their last meeting. They put forward a recommendation for approval to council. And just a couple of notes, so you know what they saw. The recommended rate was $34.74 per stormwater unit, service unit. The service unit, in this case, would be 1,000 square feet of impervious cover. Couple of examples to kind of show you what that would do. A one-acre commercial development with 80% impervious cover would pay $1,210.69 as an impact fee. A 50-acre, single-family residential development with 50% impervious cover, a typical residential development, would pay $37,831.86. So, to give you an idea of how that impact fee would shake out. If there are any questions?
Any questions for Derek? Any other comments? Public hearing is closed at 7:19 PM. Item number six, Fort Worth water update. Who is that? Is that you, Mr. Grimes?
That would be me, yes, sir. Let me pull my notes up real quick. As you guys know, we did start pulling water off of Fort Worth on August 4th. At one point, we were pulling just under half a million a day. I think we wanted to see what this water system could do. Is Michelle still out there? She can confirm this, but I think the common thinking was it took six days to fill up this water tower that's right behind us. And now, it takes one hour to fill up that water tower behind us. And so, that is significantly better than what we've had before. I think we have now dialed down our consumption of Fort Worth water and just using it at certain peak times. The temporary skater communication with Fort Worth should be up and running this week. There's a tent pole over there. And I think we're about, we should have that thing going by the end of, by Friday, is what I'm being told. The construction completion is scheduled to be completed on September 22nd. There's going to be a permanent antenna, which is going to cause the delay there. But we should have skater operations with Fort Worth within the next couple of days. And that's at, that's the Willow Park, Fort Worth Willow Park pipeline. The Willow Park to Hudson Oaks line, Walt owns the contractor. The pipeline is 99% installed. The remaining items include piping, testing, cleanup, and restoration. That'd probably be some more. We're going to have a follow-up meeting on Thursday with that group. And then, the contractor for the pump station and ground storage tank is Mela, M-E-L-A, contracting. Shop drawing and submittals and review is underway over at half. Obviously, if you drove by 203 El Chico, you noticed that some trees have been removed, and the house is no longer there. And so, they're going to start construction. They're going to do the tank excavation some point this week, begin to, to begin to excavate. And the completion date for that is scheduled for May of '22, just in time for next summer. At that point, we'll be able to get the full 3.5 million. I think it's actually going to come in in April, but I'm a little bit more optimistic than the contractor who's on the hook for it. So, that is your Fort Worth water update. Any questions on that whatsoever?
How's the mix between the Fort Worth water and our water?
Is Michelle?
I'm sorry, the water quality with the mix?
Blending.
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 Blending is awesome, let me tell you. We now know it's through our entire system because we have no free chlorine left, which is good. We have total chlorine in the system. So, the only place we have free chlorine left at is anything that's faded off of ground storage, which is where my office is at, and immediately in that area. So, blending is going good right now. We're keeping an eye on it. If anybody's got complaints, let me know because that will be the first signs that we're getting in trouble. But I think Eric and I discussed it, and considering we're only going to be doing this till October, mid-October at the latest, I think we're going to be fine, so.
Well, we need prep work for next summer.
We will need prep work for next summer, so.
Thanks, Michelle, for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Item number seven, wastewater treatment plan update.
Yes, significant news on that front. We did complete the property land exchange. I'm not saying swap anymore, at the advice of the city attorney. The land exchange was done. We closed, I think, Friday? Is that when we were?
Thursday.
Thursday. We closed on Thursday. And we are now waiting on the permitting process from TCEQ any day now, with bated breath.
Yeah, it's under technical review. It's probably still, I think, last time I said toward the end of the year, and that's probably.
Yeah. Yeah. Obviously, we can start doing some preliminary work. In fact, we already done the environmental assessment. We've already sent that in and getting that underway.
No.
No. Oh, okay. Well, we do have news.
We have been working on the environmental assessment. We have to get responses from a slew of agencies.
Okay, that's what I was meant to say.
We've gotten all but one response.
Okay.
So, as soon as we get that last response, we'll submit that to the TWGB.
That's what I meant. We've already, historical commission, the.
You responded.
Yeah.
And, and once we submit that, we'll start working. There's a little bit of right-of-way acquisition, but we need to wait until we get that response.
Thanks, Derek. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Mayor and council member comments? Mr. Grimes?
I want to thank staff. I want to thank Mike and Carrie for working with us on the budget. I want to give a big, big kudos to three ladies that I don't think we could have made this thing happen. One is Michelle Gelker, Public Works Director. She has done a great job coming in here. She's been here over, a little over a year. We had her review. It went very well. It took 10 minutes for me to tell her what a great job she's doing. But she really helped us with the budget as far as the enterprise funds go. She's been essential in getting the drainage projects up and running. She's been here every day, working with staff as far as the billing goes for the drainage and just addressing customers' needs. We put new meters in, and that's never been an easy process. And so, she's done a wonderful job of handling that. And I want to publicly thank you for your efforts. Rose Kurtalk has done an amazing job considering that she wasn't really hired to do any of the things we've been asking her to do for the last six weeks. And so, thank you for everything. She's been Johnny-on-the-spot. If I needed a document, she found it. If we needed something done, printed, whatever, she was there. She's also really, gave us some really good sage advice throughout this process. And finally, I want to thank Candy Scott. I think she got thrown into the lion's den with, in July. She has done two jobs masterfully, without complaint, without issue, and has done so with a smile on her face, or at least to me, she smiled. She is typically here around 7:15 every morning. She leaves right after 5 o'clock every day. And she's, like I said, she's done two jobs that I don't think she was planning on doing three or four months ago. And then, finally, I want to thank Bill. Bill Funderburke has just been this great guidance throughout this entire budget process since he got here. I've really relied on his expertise and wisdom. You know, he would, he'd sit there and say, "Now, you know, back in Hamilton, we did this, and here's what happened." And, you know, I just thank you for everything you've done, Bill. You've been a great friend through this entire process. And look forward to another wonderful budget year next year. And seven to eight more budgets to come.
I do have some comments before you.
Go.
Requests. Along the lines, following the kudos and thank yous to everyone that's covered, do you have an expectation of when we might be reviewing resumes?
So, the close date on that is, I want to say, the end of August. I think it's like August 30th or something along those lines. We do have some really good resumes in there. There are a couple that are jumping to the top quickly. And, yeah, you will have some choices.
So, September, October?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't really expect to do anything until after Labor Day.
Okay. I would also like to request that staff, I will say, at our last meeting, we had our third quarter financial update from Jake. And at that time, I requested him to provide additional information on our court revenues and how they've fallen off over the last three years and whether COVID. After looking at that, I'd like to request that staff look through our court revenues and why it's been a continuing down cycle and just kind of analyze how that's happening and whether we need to possibly make some changes or just look at whether we're going to be able to meet the projected revenues that we forecast in the budget we adopted. So, if you could have staff look that through, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's my last comment.
Thank you. Anything else? I'd like to thank Mr. Grimes for the budget, the tax, the numbers. He's a numbers guy. And we have a great staff. I'd like to thank the council for watching out for the police and fire department and the city. And growth is coming. And we, there's probably some more tough decisions and choices. the city, and growth is coming, and there's probably some more tough decisions and choices in the coming months we'll have to make. So I applaud the council for doing that, and Mr. Grimes, Pat, and everybody involved. We've got a great group, and we're very blessed to have that. So we'll have a group hug afterwards. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
What about items for next?
Hold on.
We need to table the last item, the executive session.
We need a motion to table the executive session, please.
We need, yeah. I do not have enough information to provide a recommendation to council for potential 380 agreement, so executive session is not necessary, and I would recommend that we table.
I move that we table the executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Do we need items for next month? Are we good on that?
That's at the meeting.
I'm sorry, the meeting is September 14th. 14th.
I have a couple of ordinances from Chief West that she wants us to review. We need to get with the mayor on a couple of committee appointments for, I believe, CIP. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
And then I've had, I've been working on an updated street improvements plan that we can have a discussion on. I need to run it by Derek, because I kind of took his model and changed a few things. I didn't change your spreadsheet.
Okay. Anything else?
The impact fee ordinance will be on the next weekend.
Impact fee ordinance, okay.
What about those policies?
Yeah, those, if they're subject to approval, and we'll get those in front.
The curfew.
The quarantine. Yeah, what about the juvenile curfew?
That report's done. Do we need it next meeting?
Can.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, everyone.